Consider the father, correlation stands. One mission to God in this call. It never changed justice.
And welcome under one. Um, I have number three is discussion form Julie, we have form. Item number four, approval of agenda, is there any change of sequence or removal of item? How having heard none, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda and establish.
Also.
I'll second.
If you will consider it to approve the agenda, published on favor of the law, I oppose. Motion carried. Item number five is announcement.
I have none.
You have none?
None.
Oh, okay, so then maybe I don't know if six, seven. Yeah. Okay, so I don't know for celebration.
Well, our celebration will be later is that we have all of our new staff here today to meet the board.
Okay.
We're celebrating that.
Okay, well, later?
Yes. Do I have to have a celebration every single board meeting?
Okay.
Kind of like celebrate all, celebrate everything.
Okay.
So what I'm saying is it's an agenda item, but that we're celebrating.
Okay, got it, okay.
Your preference, I need to celebrate.
Okay, um, agenda item number seven, public comments per school policy, when any set, any public comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to agenda item number eight, consent agenda. Item A, meeting notes certification, item B, regular meeting minutes, uh, August eleventh. Item C, financial status and all of the fund reports. Item D, hiring, part-time food service. We do not have some hiring for that yet.
No.
No.
Okay. Uh, item E, resignations, um, Kelly Moller, part-time food service and Josh Abel, new school softball coach. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent as opposed to yes presented and after a second, we can have any discussion about the financial.
I move to approve the consent as opposed to yes presented.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda items. Is there any discussion about the items and statements? Hearing none, um, all in favor of the motion, if I could say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carried. Uh, item number nine, information only. Item A, district administration, you are honored.
And board members, you should have that, you know, like, you want to pull it up. Um, so Jenny, I want to go to our, uh, actually for new staff, uh, that aren't aware. So through two years ago, we did a strategic plan. Um, and then we had a committee meet and came up with a vision and a mission statement for our district, which you see there, uh, which is kind of what drives our work in the district and then Jen, next slide. And the, the committee came up with these pillars that we focus all of our work on, uh, that you see above. And, uh, many times what you'll hear is like the board goals later, is you'll hear the board goals, the board's goals based upon the strategic plan. And that's kind of the, you know, that umbrella that we work under all the work we do here and stuff. So I thought that would be something to maybe go over, I know not many of you, but the board maybe will probably focus this, so. Okay, Jen. So I, I, you know, keep it this relatively brief because we have new staff here tonight, um, and we have a lengthy agenda with the rest of the discussion. So I just wanted to go over some upcoming events of note. So the, uh, third Friday count is coming up, but we all know that that is a very exciting time for public school districts. Um, where we will get a, um, up to the seat count on that third Friday. And then we have a second third Friday count that comes up in January where they use that to calculate our aid with a three-year rolling average off of that, um, that count. So that's coming up next Friday and then. So, uh, third week in September, so sometime third or fourth week, they will do the preliminary, uh, release of the school report card. If that will be embargoed until November, so what that does is that gives districts time to review the data and see if there's any errors, and that does happen on occasion, and then we will report back, so it's, it's embargoed. Um, it is able to, it will be shared with school staff and board members during that time, but we can't publicly release the data. So that'll be coming up here in the next few weeks.
So just a quickie question on that. Remind me, last year when we had this preliminary release, did we go into closed session? Uh, during the board meetings, should we do that?
I, I think I actually just shared that via email with staff and with the board.
Okay.
So that that's, you know, we can't do anything in a, in the board meeting, but I think I shared it via email, which.
I remember that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, October first, a mock car crash, Taylor, want to talk about that quickly?
Yeah, commercial clinic reached out to me this, um, summer in July, um, Rob and Dager, and asked if she could perform her first mock car crash in the still. Um, obviously having, um, her sons in the district, um, but also, um, inviting our physical fire department, physical police department, um, Wood County Police Department, um, and then the air helicopter landing as well. So, um, really educational experience, it has not gone up to families yet, but it will, um, but, and it hasn't gone up to staff either. So, um, kind of really fresh off the press, we're meeting tomorrow as, as a team, um, trying to finalize details and when you want to be with our plans, you know, giving it up to staff, um, and families as well.
Steve Trump. Chris?
I'm like, damn.
Hey, community members are welcome to attend, um, so we're, we're figuring out tomorrow kind of like how to, um, tell the community about it, but it's also welcome for community members, putting in the physical record, social media will be all on, um, that. But making sure everybody's aware so they're not, you know, um, not concerned about helicopter landing and what's going on and, you know, what's going on in the still. So, um, but yeah, making sure everybody's on board and following the right stuff for them.
We did this in both my former districts, not that it's two, two things, it's off, it's advantageous for the kids and the students to see, you know, as far as from making the start of decisions, but it's also, um, great for the community and the students to see the work from the fire, the protective services. Again, uh, it's, it's fantastic to see how efficient they are in the practice that goes into this, so it's, it's pretty spectacular. Looking forward to it.
We've got a helicopter land on the front of this before, um, one of the fields.
Have we?
The kids, they did a mock car crash, um, I don't know, Justin Rayburn's graduating here, so they did it. Wow.
What?
Okay, so they did it a while ago, so, um, they landed in the pit, I think, uh, previous when they did the, uh, car crash out to see in the Athens building, so.
Well, I'm going to date myself by saying this, but I bet you some other board members, not that I'm judging, would remember this, was back in the day, fourth of July, they used to land a Huey in the pit. Every fourth of July, they would fly Huey and land it, kids could get in there, so.
Taylor, when I reviewed the information, it sounded like the focus was on, um, like substance abuse and hair dyeing tips. Are they also in time in distracted cell phones?
Yes.
Like, I mean, just.
Yeah, because I didn't see that in there and I feel like. I can bring it up tomorrow if they ask, but I assume that that's what their, that's what they have some users.
Arguably that's more of a, I think, that's what I'm interested in.
Right, I mean, I think people just don't think about the impact that that could really have.
Okay, thank you, Taylor.
Thank you.
Uh, homecoming, so Taylor, back at it, real, real quick, just kind of give a synopsis, I know, hey, small town.
Homecoming meeting is fast approaching, protein, I reached out to some of our, um, lovely people last year that drove in Corvettes last year with our homecoming, um, corps members. Um, so trying to figure out the parade route, I did talk to Chief Stewart, um, and maybe going to not adjust, but maybe avoid some roads this year and maybe keep it more just in the surrounding areas just because there's some time constraints on, on certain roads. So anyways, with that, it is the sixth through the tenth, um, homecoming dance Sunday the eleventh. Um, I think student council is meeting in the next couple of weeks here to kind of finalize those days and what they look like. Um, and also our student council advisors are running both of our high school assemblies and our ministry assemblies this year. So, um, very much student involvement with Michelle Abel and Tara Grossman kind of coming together and running both of those events, so.
And we will have the mini parade again.
We will have the mini parade and the full parade.
And we may have a surprise coming, not ready for public, but we'll keep you posted, blast from the past, so. All right, so homecoming dance? You do know, we just, I need motions this afternoon. So, uh, Saturday, October eleventh is a busy night, uh, so we coordinate the Hall of Fame dance with, with homecoming. As a lot of districts do, it's great because you have folks coming back for that. The dilemma is, as much as I would like to help chapter, the homecoming dance by camera on the Hall of Fame committee, so that I, I will be attending the Hall of Fame day, but both of those will be taking place on Saturday.
Well, the Hall of Fame dance was usually open.
Mary Ann.
Well, I, you know, my husband's fine, I could come and be on your stage cleaning up.
All right.
Thank you very much, um, okay. Um, okay, uh, B, under information only, there's student representative update. So first of all, we would like an introduction.
Well, um, I'm a student here and I, and I'm Emma Bartlett, as a young student since I was kindergarten.
Wonderful, Chelsea works at PCC after school, so she's a busy lady.
Yeah, I work at the creamery.
Chelsea, okay, wonderful. Very talented young lady, so we're happy to have her.
Okay. So, uh, nothing very spectacular, we worked first week of school, but, uh, last week, Tuesday, Thursday, school was a club rush, because all the students in the whole school knocked to the east go. There's tables set up with every club, there's tables, come down, talk to the guys who are in the club, ask some questions, and then kind of chief the information, like, what you've been doing, or what, I'm just done. And then the club meeting, so obviously thirty-two, so the H O S A meeting is the twelfth, and the U V N A is the nineteenth, and then all the credit scores are eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-six, and thirty.
And then credit score is going to October, is that correct?
Yes, we, we, we just spent September for right now, but yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so then for the football team, I would ask not to include scores by many of the players because it's one of these, so, but, um. Okay, so. The second one, definitely was not thirty-four, thirty-nine.
It was called.
Forty-five, thirty-four.
Okay, it was, it was shootout, I don't know why it was thirty-four, thirty-nine.
I like it better.
Uh, and the day we scored, and the next game will be this Friday against Auburn Dale, and the next day we gain is thirty-seventh? Tomorrow, again, I never found that.
Rochelle.
Yeah, Rochelle.
Roy.
Roy, yeah, Roy.
Roy, I was picturing two of our students, Rochelle's on eight man portrait.
And on the volleyball team, they had two games so far, they were one-three against Spencer, then the day we was one-two. Uh, the fourth, they played Strattford, one-three again, and then, uh, JV was two-one. They had a tournament, uh, last weekend, and they're good sports for that, and then next, Wednesday?
Tomorrow.
And I don't want to bore you with everyone's individual time before we do the birthday, we have a long time. But they had a meeting so far, the softball team has had, had very impressive run, both of them coming in top three, I think, for both of them. And I have a meeting tomorrow, so, same as usual. You want to go ahead?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item C, the gap introduction. Keep going, we're all going to stand up now.
Going up hard line.
All right, we'll start with the high school staff first, so Troy Com and Allison Bifford, what I want you to explain, who you are, where you come from, maybe if you graduated from here, what year you graduated, and, anything about you that's fun for the board to know. So, do I have a helicopter?
Um, Troy Com, I, I graduated development degree, and, um, I'm my former, uh, high school tech ed teacher, Alan Shuman, is the reason I'm standing here, so I blame it on him. Um, he encouraged me to go into education instead of engineering, so, uh, after eighteen years, I decided it was time to come to Tech. So, um, all automotive technology except one year, since here I was not automotive technology, I just was a little bit of everything. So, anyway, um, excited to be back, um, things are happening quickly, and changing quickly out there, and the community's been awesome. And, uh, so has, uh, all the administration, been great and very helpful. And, um, yeah, it's probably going to change quite a bit in the next couple of years, but, um, hopefully we can get it to the caliber where it should be and hopefully get some kids interested in automotive. So, I'm excited to be back. Never thought it would happen, you're right.
If you haven't made it on the go, then I'll just, like, there's quite a one-eighty, um, from what I want to summer, so.
And we will do an open house and a tour here once we get the lifts installed and a few other things up, so maybe we'll house, I think, for the tour.
I'm Allison Bifford, I am a high school special education teacher. I'm originally from the faculty region, small group of the town I grew up in, I was an Iowa grad, grad graduate, and, um, I just graduated from U W S P.
Love it.
So, I go back.
All right, we're going to do elementary, which is. All right, hey, I'm going to do my best to get the names said correctly, but I'm going to probably like that. Um, so we have Victoria Hasenroll. Okay, okay, yeah.
Hasenroll.
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 Okay, I'm going to get it, that's pretty soon, then she will be married, it will be.
But I put her out.
Okay, so we have Victoria, we have Sydney Yonkey, is second grade Victoria kindergarten, Sydney is second grade. Then we have, um, Lindsay Summit is our new, um, multi-task, um, office assistant, special ed assistant, health, it's health assistant, she's got lots of titles. Um, so she's in our building, and we have Becky Sturdy is our new LMF. We have Sam Schwanbeck, Sam number three in our building, um, is our new fourth grade, and then we have.
Somi Haad.
Somi Haad. All right, so again, let them know a little background on you, um, just any of you who are physical grads, if, um, if any others, good information to share with them.
Um, you already know who I am, but I'm Victoria Hasenroll, I'm a student kindergarten, I graduated from Auburn Dale in twenty-twenty-one, and went to the U W S P and graduated in the fall, so, excited to be here.
Um, I'm Sydney Yonkey, I'm a second grade teacher, um, I am from Marstonville, Wisconsin, which is in the very middle of New York town. Um, and then I came to U W S P for school, and then I met, uh, Jason Leslie at the job fair, and now here again.
And Lindsay, um, we moved to Penn State seven years ago, I graduated in June of two thousand and seven. I have a freshman and senior here this year, um, yeah.
I'm Becky Sturdy, I'm originally from Upper Peninsula, Upper Peninsula, that was Michigan, but I've lived in Lubbock for the past over twenty-five years. And, um, I taught in a central public schools for twenty-five years, uh, all the grades from kindergarten through eighth grade, um, in multiple different varieties, project-based learning, and multi-age, and losing, whatnot, so, um, enjoyed all of it. Um, but I'm happy to be here in this position as library media specialist and, um, figuring something, new things out and, um, enjoying, enjoying the jazz so far, so thank you.
Sam Chawak, originally Kenyan, um, I graduated in oh-three. I know some of the way of you, honey, um, but this is my fifth team here, um, I taught for a couple of years after I graduated in Auburn Dale, and then went to Rapids and taught 4K for about five or six years, and then decided I was tired and went to Nekusa in thirty-three. Um, then year after that, um, I've been in this for the last seven. I have a new daughter several years ago, she's a senior. And then I decided, yeah, I'm a sophomore, I sit there in the district, um, my younger one always asks, Mom, can I come? They come and come to your class, come be in your class, and I was like, dude, no, I'm just going to here. But I, but I came here and now he's in my class. We're having fun.
And Somi Haad, I am from Branson, Wisconsin, so another really small town, um, well, I'm in the physical. Um, I graduated on ten, I actually have attended a physical dancer too. And I went to the university with Sam Milwaukee from my undergrad, and then I actually worked under Taylor Marshall at Marshall Senior High, and she's kind of the, personally, definitely pushed me to get into education, to get my teaching license, and very, very grateful that she did. Um, so I worked at the senior high with most, like, significantly uneducated students, and then I got hired at Marshall Middle School, um, and an ABD special ed teacher, which I truly have like a very special place in my heart for us, for those students. Um, I went cross-catalogical, and then I worked with seventh and eighth grade ever since then, and now I'm here, so I'm giving my song with sixth graders now as well, which, it feels like, are really nice. I'll do it, at Marshall, I told everyone, at Marshall Middle School, I can always pretty much pick out which kids come from Nashville because they're the homegrown country kids.
Yeah.
And I went home and I said, all the kids are Nashville. Because they're all, like, they're all homegrown country kids, so, I've been having a good time, good.
Principals, Danny here, anything to say about your school?
I am so excited for this school year, we're off to a good start, I know there's some overwhelm, and we're working through the, the new teacher aspect of everything. I remember my first year of teaching completely, and, um, we have a bunch of go-getters that you're looking at here, that's for sure, and I feel that that's where the overwhelm comes from, because they're ready, they're just, hit their drum, ready to do all the things, and so, Grandin Grace is the theme this year, and it's okay to not have everything.
Figure it out. Figure it out. Yeah, so, first, we're learning together. Yeah, we're learning together, and it's.
Such a good mix of old. Two of these youngsters are here directly from the job fair.
Yeah.
Just in this one job fair.
I'm like, I think, I don't know who I'd see at the job fair, but it was Ryan.
Yeah, we knew the job fair.
I seen it.
We were all there.
No, I wasn't the one in December and the fall, you were not the one. We weren't.
I, I was at both, all.
I was not there. You maybe would.
You were probably always behind.
By a door.
They were trying to keep me in the back.
We were working on administrative, we helped out.
But two of the folks directed from the job fair, um, like, yeah, so, so it's great, we're very happy to get great feedback from families, students, and the administrators so far on this group, so, thank you all.
We're happy you're here.
Welcome everybody, and thank you for, uh, being involved in the job fair, because it's, it's really, really, really appreciate it.
We have one coming up, uh, October.
Third.
Third, you know, this year's one is October third.
And it's not, it's not a task, it's more of, I think, we actually struggle to not have the resources in our community for housing for everybody. Um, so just curious, how many actually live in the district? Three?
Three. So you live anywhere in town?
Three in the district. Three in the district. So three of you? Yeah. Okay, are, are there others that wish you could live in the district, it's just not, or, like, did that create, like? Were you looking for a place? Were you looking for a place to live in the district and you struggle to find it or looking for?
Yeah, like you said, it's not a task, it's just we're housing, something we're trying to address.
We're trying to make sure that if people are looking for it, like, what can you do from a housing perspective? So it wasn't like, there's no wrong answer, like, oh, shoot, I should answer no, I just was wondering if that was a barrier for anyone. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Oh, we're going to take your phone. What did I say? One, two, three. Perfect. Thank you. Okay, um, item C, under information only, we're going to update. Say we came up with three overarching goals and are working on strategies under goal, and, uh, you'll be bringing that back to the full board for Google on, um, on the actual meeting.
Correct.
So, any other comments or?
You said something out of order? There's a deal out there. But I thought you were going to send something else to review.
Well, I was going to say, not my stuff to review.
Yeah, those are like, they have like, next step, students are going to share that with the full board.
Yeah, 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 and those are due on?
Next week, end of next week, you know, Monday of the following twenty-second, Monday or Tuesday of the following week.
Yeah, the twenty-second, twenty-third, yep, okay. So then people can react to them, and we can, words, no, yep, okay. So, um, next, item ten, discussion action item, item A is, um, a resolution operating a temporary borrowing in an amount of speed one point five million, the issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notice, and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation note program. And we can have a presentation.
Yeah.
Which one do you have?
Um, the power card, please, or, yeah.
The plan for a point of cool.
Uh, the plan card. Thank you.
And you are Charlie.
I am Charlie, I am not a physical graduate.
And did you have housing problems? Would you like to work here?
Two hours, forty-five minutes, is a little personal, I want my average to be down in Milwaukee.
Okay.
No other issues for me. But, uh, thank you everybody for having me, I was here last year to discuss the similar type of short-term borrowing, but we're taking that next step into what we think is, um, best for the district in collaboration with Pam and the finance team, so, I'm here today to discuss just a little bit about why we do the short-term borrow, what you guys have done with that, and what they're looking at this year, um, for the borrowing, so. So just a little bit of background on the district's schedule and what many cash flows for school can, to say, what's going to look like. So there's two large buckets of revenues for the town for school districts, those are taxes and state equalization aid. And unlike some other states, those revenues don't come in every month, right? So, state aid comes in four out of the twelve months, taxes come in a different quarter of the twelve months, and that leaves periodic gaps where the expenses are outpacing revenues. You can see a little bit with the blue bars, the, um, the expenses, the light blue bars are fairly, you know, even across, with the exception of September when your prior through loan gets your date. And then revenues fluctuate a lot more, um, October and November, there's almost nothing, January, February, December, June, a lot higher revenues. So that creates these ease and flows and balance, per se, that the district has, um, the orange line shows what the banking balance would be each month without any assistance from a short-term borrow. So, those. So those four months into the winter would be running, you'd be running a negative cash flow essentially. There would be no money to, um, for AP payroll. So we really got involved with the school district for their short-term borrowing needs about two years now. And when we initially addressed this issue last year, the district was drawing on repaying a line of credit to the local associated branch. And that was a variable rate at a little over six percent, which we really just didn't feel was a very competitive rate in the marketplace for where we see other school districts getting their borrowing needs at the time. So coming in last fall, we advised and worked on the district, worked with the district to get a new plan in place, which we see a lot of districts use, which is actually issuing short-term debt to fill their needs for the whole year. So last year, we repaid that higher rate, um, line of credit in October and worked with Pam to issue a standalone debt issue just the Pittsville School District, going out to local financial institutions alone, receiving bids back and, um, taking the bid from the lowest bidder to achieve the lowest interest rate. So last year, we landed at about a percent better than the line of credit was at, which is a little over five percent. It closed right on time for the second week of October payroll, um, October seventeenth. And then this year, two weeks from now, we'll look to pay that prior to your loan back. Because one of the key things is that you always pay back your old loan before you take on a new one. Um, non-council, conductors, nobody likes to see having to borrow to repay the borrow. So then we arrive at what is the plan program? And this is sort of what we were stepping to last year. The timing didn't quite work out to get the district to be a participant in the plan program. But this year, we're gonna be looking at it. So the plan program is taking twenty or so school districts across, across the state that all need their steep money and payback money at the same time and bringing them together to make a larger issue that's more attractive to the marketplace and so on. So we, as PMA, have been running this school for thirteen years now. Have issued two per year, so twenty-six total issues totaling over nine hundred and twenty-five million dollars in short-term debt issued. And as I said, the main benefit is, um, the cost effectiveness and the, um, benefits we yield going for a larger pool borrowing as opposed to just twenty districts going for like one million each, which doesn't generate a lot of interest for the larger investment banks across the country. So this year, currently has eight, eighteen participants. Pool A, which Pittsville will be participating in, has eight. And then Pool B, which closes three weeks later, just depending on when the borrowing need is, has the other ten participants. And then the last point is that, um, the pool is rated. So last year, we didn't, um, we didn't go off some rating agency to get a rating because it's a very expensive cost as an individual, it's twenty to thirty thousand dollars, which doesn't make it common sense for one district to do on their own. But pooling it together and splitting that cost equally based on, you know, percentage of your borrowing against the total makes that much more valuable for the borrowing. So I've already touched on a lot of these, um, advantages to the, to the program in the previous slide. But like I said, just pooling together all the costs of issuance, that's your legal counsel. It's, um, the bond counsel for this is Carl Brady. The rating agency, which is Moody's, PMA, and, uh, any other parties involved are all pooled together. So there's one fee split between all the participants. And then we work directly with the district staff, Pam in this case, on developing that detailed cash flow analysis going month by month, week by week, to really pin down how much you need to borrow, when you need to borrow it, and what are the pros and cons of deciding on a maturity date for when it should be repaid. So a little bit on the historical plan rates, um, not much to speak to here. We just wanted to kind of show you guys the rate range we've been receiving in comparison to what you've done the last couple of years. So we're really in that low threes to upper four percent. Um, just this morning, we had a call with Barrett, who's the under editor for this issue. And we're hoping to achieve under a four percent as well this year. So we're looking at another percentage point improvement compared to last year's issue alone, which when you're looking at over a million dollars for a year outstanding is a good amount of interest in. And then the steps in the plan process, so a little difference in last year when we held that special meeting and we got all the bids back before the morning of, and then the board approved it that evening. Um, this is a little more, a little bit of different process because having one sale date in several different districts, you can't have, everybody have a special meeting on the same day to approve the sale day out. So the process starts with cash flow development and, uh, determining what the district needs. And then development of the official statements. The official statement is the document that goes out to all the banks around the country, all the investors, tells them some background in the financial history of each district, what they're looking to borrow, the purpose for the borrowing, et cetera. And then we get the Moody's rating call, the rating back from Moody's. We did receive that back last week. We got a maybe one, which is the highest possible rating for short-term debt. And then we land that tonight, uh, September eighth, which is where the parameters are approved. So parameter is a little, little different than sale date approval. It's essentially approving parameters for the borrowing. So a maximum borrowing amount, one point five million dollars interest rate, which we use a conservative six percent, although we think it'll come in significantly less than that. And, uh, maturity date, which I believe we're looking at September twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-six. So the same maturity date as last year, just for next year as well. Um, and then day of sale, which is Thursday, the authority would be delegated to, um, Mr. Knottson, Pam, for to accept the, the bid that we got, the interest rate that we got and move forward with the final financing and, um, closing on October second. That's all I have for you guys. Um, open any questions you have about it or?
Is there anything you use besides when we want to pay it back as to who we pool with?
Uh, the main driver of who you pool with is based on more so when you need it. So the first pool closes the first week of October. Several districts needed for that first October payroll. And then it just so happens that many other districts needed for their second or third October payroll, depending on if it's a triple payroll month, which it often has it. So other than, um, timing, the B, there's no other specification. And then one other point, I guess, I should say is advantage to, um, some of you might ask why we chose the year-long maturity date instead of just repaying it back. You know, earlier after those June, uh, June equalization agencies, we do see that add the interest rates to a pretty predictable gap. There's a great opportunity to invest some of these funds in a money market pool such as the state LGIT, which is currently yielding a higher percentage than what we feel the borrowing rate is gonna be at the zone.
Um, I have a question. Um, I know we used to launch and go and then we stopped, but now we're doing it again. And my understanding is that when we replenish our fund balance and the referendum time, that we may not need to short-term borrow. Is that correct?
That's possible.
Possible, yes.
The operational referendum, from my understanding, ramp up every year. It'd be a little more every year. And I guess I defer a little bit to Pam on, on this. I think that the goal.
It's the objective to be back up to twenty percent of.
Yeah.
Our, you know, our fund balance to be twenty percent of the next year's cost. So that is the goal, not to have to short-term borrow by the end of the year.
Right. Okay.
I have two follow-up questions to that. The first is, what did we borrow? Can you remind me what we borrowed last year?
One point three. For this, for twenty-four, twenty-five that weren't repaid, yes, one point three.
So why are we trending in the wrong direction since we have one referendum?
Other questions?
Like, why are we asking to actually borrow more? I would guess that we should be.
Because our, our costs in that first year were not all of our costs. Like, we, we, we didn't have our increase in payroll and all of that because that was our first year. So like, we didn't know until November if we were getting those. So we, we did not, we did not budget for the full increase in pay in twenty-four, twenty-five or the five hundred dollar supplemental pay in twenty-four, twenty-five. Everyone just got the regular GPI. So there were a lot of costs now that we agreed in the referendum that we were going to do as like the increase for maintenance or, um, painting for curriculum started in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Yeah, I think it's also.
So we kind of ramped up our expenses as well. And it's kind of matching what we're also having in the referendum for this.
Second follow-up question on that, what is our current fund balance?
Well, I would have to pull up the financials to, to look at that. It's, it's like only seven hundred and ninety thousand right now because there's no revenue coming in, just investments going out.
And so we anticipate needing to spend that seven hundred thousand and one point five million in the hole before we'll come back?
Well, that's, that's, that's fund balance, that's not cash flow.
Yeah, I, I was gonna point out that the fund balance and, you know, cash flow doesn't necessarily correlate. Well, the fund balance is the calculation at the end of the fiscal year. The main problem in why you need the one point five million is because you need to get to your January tax receipt. That one point five million in the negative is, is happening in fall when there's none of that, none of those larger revenue streams coming in.
Well, I thought that that referendum was supposed to take care of a lot of this. I mean, now it's bad optics, in my opinion. We're having to borrow one point five million after, after taxpayers give us this referendum last year.
But the thing, we need, because we don't get that money until January, no correct?
From the referendum.
So the referendum money, we're not seeing until January. Well, we don't have the cash to make payroll in October, November.
It's because of the time you went to state.
So when you get that money, is that what, is all you're saying is payment?
Well, then, then like hopefully between February and repayment, we'll be able to invest that money, that loan money and make money off of it. So we just don't, we don't have the referendum money till January and so there's that big gap.
It's the way the revenues from the state are set up. They, they don't give you the money at the start of the year. So your, your revenue or all, it just happens with all, like, all districts get that. So you have to wait for these big amount payments. And this is a way to fill that gap that, that repayment covers. So we're not borrowing any more than was projected in the referendum. It's just the timing of when we're getting the revenues from the state. We have to use this money to meet payroll and do all that stuff until that money comes in and then it goes and covers. I'm glad you pointed out the point about the reason we don't pay it back right away is if we're borrowing at four percent and there's investment opportunities, we can invest that above four percent. We actually will make some more of that interest back by waiting to pay it off, so.
I just think that's bad, that's bad timing for them to send us that money after we've already needed it.
Yeah.
And I don't know how that would ever change. But, I mean, the sale was, we need operations, we have operational need. And now we're seeing it again. You see that sale?
So the, but is it, is it a correct statement to say that our plan is still after the four-year, after a completed four-year referendum, we will have twenty-two or twenty-three percent is what it was? Um, and that will create us to not need to short-term borrow?
Hypothetically speaking, we should have enough money.
It would be an assumption that it's just the first year. So even next year, we shouldn't be borrowing more. We should actually be borrowing less and we're, we're gonna wait for that four years.
Yeah, that's right.
I, you know, I, I think one of the overarching things that puts all school districts in the pickle is the way the state of Wisconsin.
It's true. I just think that, I mean, I didn't expect us not to borrow. I guess I just didn't expect us to borrow more than what we borrowed last year when we just had our first year of referendum. So that's, that's the only question. I totally expected us to borrow. And, but I expected us to actually be stepping back each year because we have more in our fund balance and that was part of what we shared.
Yeah, the, the eight years, because it was the first year, because we couldn't assume that the referendum was gonna pay out. So there were certain components that weren't in the, in the budget, like that increase that's in for staff for this year, that five hundred that was projected. So it was actually projected to be a little bit more this year. And then as Pam just said, is that it should, we should be borrowing less moving forward at this point now for short-term borrowing as we build that fund balance up. And it's all in the timing. Like, yeah, Chris, can I get the optics? Honestly, there's absolutely, like, there's nothing we can do about it just because of the timing of when, when they release the money to us, when we start getting those funding sources. But if we had like a three or a four percent and we invest the money in January, by the time we pay it back, we're not gonna actually end up paying that four percent in interest because we're gonna recoup some money right in the future.
Well, they'll pay the interest, but we'll, we'll have interest revenue to offset it, right?
Um, hopefully above the borrowing rate this year.
Yeah, yeah. You know, I, I think, yeah. Yeah, you know, if, if board members get pushed back or, you know, questioned from the community, I, I really think that the key issue here is the way the state distributes revenue.
Yes.
It, you know, it.
In a short-term borrow, we're not spending any more money.
Nope.
We're just borrowing because they're not giving us the money.
I mean, we're spending, I mean, if it ended up being six percent, which is what you're asking them to approve, I understand it's gonna come under it. But, but we're giving permission for it to be at the six percent. I mean, that's like ninety grand. No, no, and interest.
Yeah, but and if we, we probably cut half because we're gonna invest it in some sort of fund.
Okay, well, isn't it five point oh eight?
That was last year.
That was last year. It gives your ability to lower.
He was projecting that.
Okay.
We're bringing up the possibility is what we're asking about.
What are the chances of it being fixed?
I don't like to guarantee anything, but I would be absolutely shocked. Um, we had our call with Barrett this morning and we've seen a couple other districts do standalone issues in the market. Um, Cambridge and Partickale still, and they came in close, a little bit under four even, so. Um, there's a lot of volatility in the markets right now that I feel very confidently is gonna happen.
Okay, but or just as hard for us, I mean, is there a reason why we cannot have something locked in place and identified percentage, um, percentage? Um, because if we're, you know, a audit is for us to pass something when we're saying, well, you know, up to six percent. Well, shit, you take that, excuse my language, but you, you can take that and say, well, they improved up to six. I mean, why would the company, I guess, come in with anything less?
So the proposed resolution says up to six percent. It's a, right? It is a proposed resolution. If we as the board want to say, you know, no more than five point two five, I think we can do that. If we want to change the resolution.
I think at this point, I don't know if you can change the resolution.
Why not?
Because it was drafted by Carl Brady.
And we're in with those, in those other districts.
The real reason we can't go like last year, which I wanted to get to, is because, uh, eight other districts don't all have the same board meeting dates to approve.
Right.
On the day of sale.
Right.
So we, that, we feel as a very conservative not to exceed interest rates. And I know six percent is not ideal, but comparatively, we still feel very good about it. Um, we're seeing a lot of local banks get line of credit, the primary rate, which is seven and a half percent currently. Um, and I also feel that there's no way we're gonna touch that. But ultimately, if something crazy happens in the next three days.
Well, that is supposed to cut, supposedly cutting rates in, right? So I, I, yeah. I don't see it increasing.
To clarify, with what you said, you heard back from Barrett, right? You, you said it sounded promising around four percent essentially, that something would have to change drastically in the next three days to blow that up.
Yeah, like a major event at the federal level or something, or something crazy unexpected.
But if that happens, we're not quoting anything for sale. Like if it's a hundred and fourteen.
If it's over, it's gonna be exact. We may automatically reject the bids for all participants.
Okay.
We go back to redo it.
And my final question is, do we absolutely need one point five? Like, we won't be able to cut a check? Like, we absolutely need it or have we buffered it by two hundred thousand to give them a buffer?
I believe it was only about a hundred thousand dollars buffer. I think we were at one point four something. I think it's a little bit.
You know, this is a business decision, but if each and every one of you hadn't made a decision like this, you wouldn't do it if it was your own personal money that you were trying to obtain because you were not told and guaranteed a locked-in percentage.
And I understand the difficulty of when you're working with a team pool district. And I understand the difficulty of when you're working with a state pool district. Um, okay, so looking at the, um, looking at the timeline that you put together, uh, where are we, right here? Okay. Uh, day of sale is going to be this Thursday, and the final approval will be Thursday. So that we need to believe that, that PMA will be communicating with the district to let us know what the final is here.
Yeah, so we'll get the final interest rate back when the, it'll be communicated out right away.
Okay, so what state?
Your approved, um, your people approved to approve the final have to do that on Thursday morning. But the rate will be back Tuesday.
And am I correct in assuming, two, two years ago, we approved, it was 6.1, what did we bid first year?
What did you ask? We had $400,000, it was, it was variable, 6.15 to 6.3% probably.
And then last year it was-
Just a plain old line of credit.
That was a lot of credit, that was a lot of credit.
Because we were under those, about to get money from payroll.
So the idea behind doing this is that we're, by pulling with these other districts, we're able to get a better, a better rate than we had on that line of credit, so we're actually borrowing money at a better rate here. Unless something catastrophic happens in the next three days.
Yeah, so we feel-
That would still protect us, that's for sure.
Other than that, no. Three, three real options, which is the line of credit by yourself, the TRAN by yourself, and the pool. We feel that the pool offered is essential to the lowest rate down the three.
And I, I trust your professional opinion on that, especially when I see the data. Do you, board members have other concerns they would like to raise? Um, haven't heard from Rick at all, I don't think, and maybe not, no, me, you have a question. Rick?
I know these two have investigated it in great detail. And I know these two are who I put my trust into. So I don't need to ask a whole lot of questions.
Yeah, I understand the questions, right, honestly, this is being, this is being caught, like, we are between a rock and a hard place because of when the state dispersed this revenue, that, that's what it comes down to. We're right on our projections for the referendum as far as expenditures. This is just a matter of, we don't get the money, the money that was approved by the taxpayers in the referendum, the state held on to that.
No, the municipalities are holding it.
The municipalities hold on to it, and then they get first. And we, my bad, yes.
Yeah.
So we're waiting until February to get that large, the large payment.
And even then, there are some taxpayers that choose to pay their property taxes into install. So we'll get the rest of property tax money in July, August.
We don't get it till August, so we're spending money and we don't get the rest.
The timing makes no sense when you ask first. It's not set up for, it's consumed for schools, it's set up for the municipalities, what, like, so it's not set up for us. It's not designed to, when we need it.
And it's, that's also not designed robust on a state level, although I'm sure they have a reason for this in place when they do, but-
I mean, maybe this is a poor analogy, but like, if you were working at a place that only paid you like, right, like, like they paid you every week for a while, but then it would be like usual three months without getting a paycheck. If you don't have a huge savings account available to get you that, that money, you may have to take out a loan, line of credit at a bank, until you get that payback, it's not ideal. But the other events is you just don't, you're not able to pay your bills or pay your workers. I wish there was a better system, I know this is something that school districts have brought up to legislators and to the state, the state level, that is a huge issue for school districts all around the state.
So I would just, I mean, I would, I would be approving this. There's two comments that I wanna make. I would expect our borrowing was less than 1.5 million next year, actually less than 1.2, that we're going in the right direction, not the wrong direction. And number two, I would be asking that we don't go in this direction if we end up getting locked in at 6% next year, but we look at other alternatives. So I'm trusting that that won't happen. But if it does, then I would ask that we look at other things for next year because I don't believe that 6% would be our best option. But this is what we need to do for this year, this is what's brought in front of us, and we need to pay our staff.
Yeah, it's just, it's just too bad that it's gotta be just one, one choice. This is the way we're gonna do it. We need this money, and we're, we're, we're just at our mercy. Isn't that an odd way of doing business? We're, we're at our mercy now, we have to have this money if we wanna make our payments. After a referendum that said we'd be able to, I mean, and I understand that we don't get this money, but it just looks bad. And, and no guarantee on the interest rate, that's just, that's incredible.
Well, there is a guarantee, I imagine, and I, I think part of our job as board members is to be able to inform the community about why we have to do these things. And, you know, not, we have to be clear about sharing this fact of, you know, okay, again, ancient history, when I was on the board, it means odds, you were doing this for a period of time. And the, the gift of school district had done it for a long time, they had done, they had done borrowing. And then we were able to build up the fund balance, and it was like, yippee, we don't have to do this again. And so we went for a long period of time without doing short-term borrowing. We're in a situation where we have to do it again. You know, these things tend to be cyclical when you look at history, okay? And we took action and the taxpayers approved taking action of passing the referendum so we could replenish our fund balance and hopefully not be able to do this again. That, we need to share those facts. You don't have to talk about the odds, though.
Well, I, I'd just like to say, like, I, like, we could have the five options in front of us, and I'm assuming we didn't just, you know, not look at anything else, but you're bringing us to one that's lower. Like, if we go down to Associated Bank right now, like you said, it'd be seven and a half.
And one thing that I wanted to point out is that in fiscal year 23, 24, I don't know that you're ever locked into a rate from Associated.
No.
I didn't research that.
I don't, I don't have a credit.
I think they could have believed that in 23, and it was true. And we would have done stuff.
Credit. So when we looked at the three options we had, you know, this line of credit at the bank, which the bank wasn't going to touch our TRAN, so there's no way it would have touched a 1.5 million dollar line of credit if they weren't even going to bid on our 1.3 million dollar TRAN held standing at last year. So of our three options of short-term borrowing we used in the past, this was the best rate.
Okay, very good, so we did have other options, and that's better than you already.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yep. And I did, when we were projecting the referendum, we did project short-term borrowing at 6%.
That's why I say we're hitting our targets in the referendum that we projected.
Well, and we knew we were gonna be borrowing, and so hopefully, we wouldn't need to at the end of the four years.
Correct.
So I just think it's more about why is it going in the wrong direction versus the right direction? And it's just because of the first year.
The first year of the shooting.
And how that money is what you're sharing, which is great. And then we know we'll start going in the right direction next year.
And, and we know, and Chris, to that point, one of the intriguing things about this option was that, that mentioned is that, that borrowing, that, that line of credit we had the first year was, we would just pull it when we needed it. And the, we make, the rate was variable, it could go way up, we don't have our control. Here, once this rate is set and fixed, to, to this point, we can take that money. In between, we can do, you know, notes that we can collect more interest back on those notes and actually cut some of those, that 4% actually becomes even lower than, depending on what we can do. So there was a process we went through looking at all these options, and Pam worked with PMA to come up with, you know, we talked to Associated, and to that point, I don't even know what it would be right now, but it would not be anywhere close to.
They wouldn't probably not.
They wouldn't touch it if they would. So yes, we did look at other options, this made the most sense to stay within those parameters of what was projected in the referendum for that interest that was in the referendum and have the opportunity potentially with some of the investments to even come in lower than that.
Okay, so that's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
So, so it's like, even if it, so even if it was at 6%, with our investments, we have a possibility, high, high probability of being able to recoup that?
If it's at 6%, what?
I think your borrowing cost would be higher than your investing opportunity.
But at 4%?
Yeah.
At 4%, you've got enough, you've got some way to work to do it.
Yeah. And we're not, and we're in the policy, we're not in the evaluation of the policy, which maybe we need to look at because it's over a decade old. But if we keep the fund balance at 20%, and if it goes below that, be short-term borrow.
That's correct.
We are expecting to be able to work to get it back to 20%.
That's exactly what we're doing to the referendum.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly-
But good question, but yes, there's a lot of research done on this, which will help with the most cost-effective.
Yeah, um, I, I have one other suggestion for at the end of, at this time next year, is to be able to have some simple, one-page summary of the borrowing cost as well as the amount of access that was invested.
So any revenue?
So identify the revenue.
So you want a, a synopsis of, what, 25, 26 results, basically?
Yeah.
Yeah.
How much can we actually be?
Yeah. And how much, how much income did we bring in?
Okay.
Um, relative to that, and I think that would be helpful.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and would anyone like to call a question? Or do we have a motion, I believe we have a motion in the, no, we don't have any other motion in the session. Okay, Chris, but I need a motion.
Well, they want a roll call motion on this. So the roll call motion would be to approve the resolution, resolution authoring temporary borrowing in the amount that's been 1.5?
Me? Well, we don't have a motion, do we?
A second. You don't need to, if it's a roll call, do you? You don't need a first and a second if it's a roll call? She just reads, I think, usually people just say aye. She reads each of the names off, so she reads the resolution, reads the names off, and everybody just aye her name.
Okay.
There's no first or second.
Well, maybe we do when we go into post-session and then we, so I'll make a motion to approve.
One second.
Now, you want a roll call?
Yeah.
Me?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
Mary Ann?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you for that motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you ever want welcome living?
Oh, we gotta stop this, they're working on, they're working on, we need to watch this.
Yeah. Okay.
I don't have a feeling.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, um, under, um, item, discussion action, item 77 action, we have item B, the work of conference and the state education conference. Um, the work of conference, again, is gonna be held in the evening, it's so weird.
I'll try to come up here.
And, um, Friday, October 3, I'm sorry, Thursday, October 30th, and Friday, October 31st. And I believe there's a welcome reception on Monday night, or on Wednesday night?
Wednesday night, sure.
Yeah, so even if, even if people couldn't come to the thing because they have to work, um, you could probably come to the reception to network. So, anyway, um, my understanding is registrations have been sent in for the administrative team, for Jason and for me.
Yeah, and you need the rest of the board, if you would like to attend, we can get your registration.
And there is a one-day registration also. And the thing on Friday, it usually ends up like noonish, 1:00, whatever.
Yeah, it's not until the end of the day that you go.
So, yeah, that's one of the, here.
I would-
Is it costume, I think I'm-
I would tell you.
Bring that up, please.
I would tell you, having gone to WERSA and WOTI, um, I find WERSA really kind of fulfilling being from small rural school district, like, I think, I'm not saying that the state conventions, uh, sessions are not applicable, but WERSA is really like where it's folks, where Mingland, the folks that are in the same situation as we are. So I, I find it enjoyable to go and very informative. I created a lot of connections from WERSA in my three years that I use regularly.
Yeah. Um, so I'm not sure when registration closes, but please do talk to Jason. Um, also, what we can do is send out maybe a link to the agenda. Uh, that might help people decide.
So you can see what the sessions are? It's got a whole list of the agenda, I'll send it.
Yeah, it's really a robust agenda, and what I heard is, right now, the registrations are trending way ahead of, um, where they usually are at this time of year. Because it's always held at the same time of year, but, yeah, it's, it's gonna be full, so. Um, and then, of course, the state school board convention in, um, January, where am I here, 21st to 23rd, in Milwaukee. Uh, hotel reservations open November 3rd. Um, if you have any interest in going, it would be good for, um, Jason and Jen to know so we can make the hotel reservations.
We can always cancel.
We can cancel the hotel reservation.
We can always cancel.
Yeah.
We can let you go there?
As soon, as soon as you could, like, it opened, Jen wants to alternate for a hotel reservation.
Sorry, November 3rd.
So we got a while before it even opens. But we like to do, the ones that are close by, fill up very quickly on November 3rd.
Why would that, um, can we all go to that?
Yes, yeah, we, we did go last year because of the, because we weren't sure if the, we did budget for it.
Is anybody here planning on not coming?
I'm probably not going.
Yeah, I'm not.
And, and some of you, you may recall in the past, like, we've gone for one of the days or, or, you know, either of the days or whatever. We just would need to know what night to get the reservations for, if you needed hotel reservations, so we can always cancel.
I find it very important.
Yeah, if your schedule allows, gotta gas for off.
Yeah. So Rick and Chris just let, let me know as soon as possible, I mean, we have to come November before we have to.
I'll do the voting again, so.
Okay.
I'll, I'll be.
Okay.
Yeah, because you've never been to the whole concept, how you set. Oh, you were, okay, okay.
Good.
Don't you don't?
We'll take care of that.
Okay, um, item C, policy 454, reporting child abuse in Mexico, last first reading.
Do I just have one question? Um, so there's a section of individuals that are not mandatory reporters. And it looks like the only example, like, I assume everyone's a mandated reporter who is employed and works for the district by the nature of working for the district. So I would need to know who that would actually apply to. And the only example it gives are like volunteers, but I'm not sure, like, does this policy really, like, do volunteers actually get policies? I mean, I, I, I've heard of like examples given by, um, WAFC, and the other one included volunteers in the part of that process. And the police, um, our school social worker and I were discussing that kind of opens a hole, you have to train every single volunteer as being a part of the mandatory reporting. Um, is a question that you have, with including volunteers as a mandatory reporter. And then you make sure that any volunteer that comes in gets that training because I feel like we would be liable as part of including them in our policy. I don't know how feasible that would be to make that happen.
The language in that part that Julie's talked about indicates that, that they're strongly encouraged to communicate with someone within the district if they witness one, which is like, so, um, it's, it's on page, it's the top of the paragraph, the next page. Says the person encounters a concern regarding interest or neglect in connection with the role, the district strongly encourages the individual to promptly discuss the concern with an, with a school principal or another administrator employed by the district. So, so more or less, I believe, like, statutory that we can't require that person cannot be held liable. But what we say is, they strongly encourage the person, if something happens, you should report, you know, to your prin, to the principal or if you're a volunteer. But I, to Julie's point, yeah, it's volunteers, I think it listed volunteers and hands.
Can you give that example?
So who are non-employees who are-
Could be like a contractor, could be like a contractor, I guess, I-
A bus driver?
Yeah, like a baseball coach or something.
Right, but they're paid employees.
Right, but they're a paid employee, not all of them.
The volunteers, like, so far, you.
So, for all of them, they all go through and know what, like, they, like, the bus drivers and all the, like.
I definitely, I think Julie has said that.
I'm just, like, I'm just concerned how this is, like, how are we asking?
Volunteer coaches. The volunteer coaches, but every, like, you can't, you can't be volunteer, but you should be on background, sure.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's nothing to do with mandatory reporting, I, I just feel like, I don't, when I read this, I don't know who needs to and who doesn't need to, and how we're, how we're controlling who needs to, and how we're even notifying people who are and who aren't.
Yes, well, and if you're a mandatory reporter, you need to have training, so my question.
We require that.
Right, so does food service, does the store have staff?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
So, so here, I guess this would be an example, I'm just trying to think this through too, so like, we get parent volunteers, so, I, I don't know if it's feasible to run parent volunteers through a, like, to get people, it's hard to find volunteers. So that would be maybe an example, that we would obviously encourage them to report something if they did, but they wouldn't be held liable like we are as mandatory reporters, I don't know if that makes sense or not.
Yeah, I think, I think, like, what I don't understand is what number one is saying then, because who is a non-employee who are mandatory reporters?
A non-employee who's.
But they're, okay, say, I'm nervous.
I could have referred to me in my previous role. The contract, I was a contractor employee.
You were a contractor.
And I would have had to report that stuff, because I could see you're working.
Well, like, how, how does it work if we have, like, complete controls here? Obviously, right, if they see something, they can't tell they're not a mandatory reporter, they're not, so we hired them as the district, but they're here, and we would expect they would say something to Dan, they have complete controls here, and they saw something, you know, that was suspicious.
I still didn't have the training before, but I wasn't a, I was, I was a contractor, so I still took the training.
Can we read what number one says, like, I don't understand what one says.
Okay.
In addressing the mandatory obligations of district employees to promptly and appropriately report matters related to child abuse and neglect, this policy in no way affects the obligations of other individuals who are designated as mandatory reporters under state law, and who may at times be present in district programs or facilities, or working with district students, and it's titled, "Non-Employed Who Are Mandatory Reporters."
Okay.
Chief Stewart as an SRO. He's not a lawyer, is he?
Okay, so I'm.
This is.
He's a mandatory reporter.
Okay, so I'm thinking, aren't, in general, aren't nursing staff considered mandatory? So if you have a parent who is also a nurse, and they're a volunteer, they, that, that's the thing that I think of. Um, or, yeah, someone that in their professional capacity is a mandatory reporter, but they're not, but they, they just think, they're just hanging around the school.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm. Obviously, they're here.
Does somebody have a, not a, a report?
Well, I'm just gonna, especially, yeah, I, I can say this, if this delays the concerns, that every single school employee is trained, uh, as a mandatory reporter, it's required training for every single school employee, so, um, other than, like, Jer, you know, Jeremy, you know, is an example, and then any of the parent volunteers, but every single school employee cooks, everybody is trained.
Okay, I'm gonna draw, I'm gonna draw a, a run long key wrench into this. What about folks that work with the after-school program, who either are AmeriCorps or are community members who get paid?
I believe they have to go through part of the AmeriCorps processes.
Yeah, I think you shared that with the writing.
Do, do they do that?
Yeah, it was like, there was a whole list of requirements.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's really, I don't think that's.
Yeah.
Well, some of them can, for sure, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about someone from the community, because people can either volunteer to work with the after-school program, or they can get paid. So, paid, they should get the training. Okay.
We have high school students that volunteer.
Um, but they're under eighteen, that helps, we can make them a mandatory reporter for under eighteen.
Okay.
Yeah.
What about someone over eighteen who comes in? Yeah, I, I think that needs to be clarified then, before our second reading.
Just to be clear, you guys act like, I feel like this is really ambiguous here, like, so I want clarification of what you want me to clarify, but it's also like, say that, only because we could get down a rabbit hole of, like, like, people here, like, I just.
Who's a, who's a non-employee that's a reporter?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, so you want me to find out what an example of that would be, a, a non-employee mandatory reporter, so.
And I would also like to find out if the people that get paid to work in the after-school program, if they go through the training. AmeriCorps, yes, but if someone comes in once a week and gets paid.
Right, if, if individuals who are not mandatory reporters truly not are employees, and that's the only exception.
And if that's the case, I think that's helpful, you've given an example of a volunteer, but are they truly non-paid people, or are they paid people by us? Or paid by someone else but working on behalf of us? So I would consider a contractor someone, we would expect that contractor to make the same, same requirement, right? Yeah, you just can't contract it out and then have, have the responsibility.
The one I need to know more about that is the after-school program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes, because it's both, it's just, if they're getting trained.
Yeah.
Because they are our employees. Yeah, okay.
And my last question is, the Wasbe, um, example, gave opportunities for us to include people as mandatory reporters, or we chose to do that?
This is direction for Wasbe, this is their.
So Wasbe's direct is giving, there is a.
Action in purpose.
Okay.
There's a fair purpose.
Okay.
So they need to, anything other than the specific information to pick well, or who to call, um, what county.
Perfect, so Wasbe specifically has these non-employees who are mandatory reporters, and individuals who are not mandatory, in, in their language.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, we don't like to make changes, because Wasbe has been legally vetted by their, by legal counsel, so we don't like to make changes, because we may think, well, that would be expensive to be vetted, put in there for a reason, so if the board asks us to check in something specific, then we will, we will email Wasbe and ask, is there a specific reason legally that that has to be?
I think I misunderstood, I, I thought, I heard that we made a change.
No.
But if this is, the all, everything yellow is the.
Directly from Wasbe.
Everything.
With gaining up.
With their example and everything, well, well, the, I'm going to be told, then I'm, well, but you might, might ask them for what their, another example.
Yeah. I'm just, I was just concerned, I didn't realize there could be any exceptions to mandatory reporting in schools, so it just made me nervous, that I didn't want us to.
And we as a district, and we call it our after-school program, like, it, it's an online training that we did, we, we can have our after-school program people do it, even if it's.
At least they're being paid, you should.
Yeah.
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 We, we could have volunteers do it, it's just, right now, it's so hard to get volunteers that it can start putting extra hoops for people to jump through, and usually volunteers aren't working alone, they're working under supervision.
I was just gonna say, just, yeah, a volunteer shouldn't be alone with a student, probably, and so, that is the whole reason, because whoever else is there is paid to work, right?
Okay, so that's just the, okay, um, do we want to move this on? I would entertain a motion to, um, I guess, I don't know if we want to accept it right away, or if we want clarification.
Well, we can move it to second reading.
Well, move it to the second reading, right?
And I'll, I'll get clarification on that.
Okay, well, I would, um, entertain a motion to not accept the first reading, but to move it on to the second reading. Motion?
I'll make a motion, rule four fifty-four to second.
I'll second it. Any more discussion?
Your policy, yeah.
You're doing policy. I'm, I'm doing this, no, I'm doing this separately.
Well, he actually.
Because we have.
I could rule under policy.
C, okay. Okay, so we're doing C first, which is the policy, and I've had a motion, a second. Any other discussion? On paper, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Now we go on to the rule. I don't have any questions, though. Is there a motion to move this on to the second reading?
I'll make a motion to accept first reading of rule four fifty-four, for child abuse and neglect, and move forward actually.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to move the, um, rule four fifty-four on to the next agenda for a second reading. On paper, signify by saying aye? Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. The Panther Community Fitness Center is the next item, and I know that's something that we've all been waiting for.
Yeah, so we are ready to, if, if the board proves this tonight, we are ready to put it out on social media, and it's ready to go on physical record.
Thank you.
To, to do a membership drive here to try to increase our fitness membership. Um, very proud that we came up with a plan that those that want to keep just the base rate, and just come during the intended hours, have that option, so if there are people that are like, I don't want to pay more, I just want to keep coming, they have that available, and those who want to have that full access, um, which I think for a very reasonable hundred fifty dollars extra, I mean, if you're talking getting full membership of the weight room, the fitness center, and the gym. If you check the light key out, for two hundred fifty dollars for a year is, uh, I think, a really affordable rate for folks, and then you get discounts, so, pretty happy with what we've gone up here and excited to see, uh, I think we're gonna pick up a, a lot of extra memberships with this. And Pam, we addressed all the concerns from the insurance company, yeah, so.
Um, I do have a question, and that is related to the, um, um, the rules and regulations.
True.
You know, I looked at this probably too quickly, uh, but do we have any recourse if people don't follow the rules and regulations?
Lots of them.
Yeah, three, three, we have the three strikes rule that's listed in there later, and that was one of the things the insurance company told us to do, it specifies what that looks like, and after three, three violations of policies, you would lose your membership.
Okay, where is?
It's on the very first page of the application, where there are telling that they brush the rules and regulations, and then the last.
Yeah.
I agree, there, yeah, yeah, I agree, okay.
So, I, I have one other question. The additional, extended hour additional fee for one fifty, so if I'm a member, and I'm a couple member at two sixteen,
Yeah.
is it a hundred and fifty for the couple? Or is it a hundred and fifty per person?
That's why I should.
Yeah, we should clarify that.
Because I would have read the, yeah, you're right, thank you, Julie.
Yeah. Good catch, so we need to clarify that. Nobody understands what she's asking, so if you're a couple, and by the extended, you would have to pay.
And, and do we want to do a discount?
Yes.
Because we do a discount for individuals and couples?
We will, we will extrapolate that out to the same discount.
Seventy-five percent or whatever you did for that, but, okay.
Yep, good catch. So Pam, what, what the map that?
Because I would be okay sitting at one door and being guarded, and we would just share it.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'm still looking for the three strikes thing.
Right here.
Where is that? Oh, okay, got it.
Regulations revoked.
Okay, I was looking at the wrong.
And we gotta add a D to revoke, there, just, I'm just catching.
Sure.
It says, my membership is revoked, so we gotta add a D on that, I'm just making a note.
And another quick question. I'm a college student, and I'm home.
Yeah.
And I'm paying thirty-nine dollars, really, if I want to come at midnight, I have to pay a hundred fifty extra. So I, I just feel like the hundred and fifty isn't matching the rest, like, I know I'm a senior citizen, and I already, you know, I had a discount of a couple of half, but I'm still gonna pay a hundred and fifty if I wanna, I mean, they just don't match what our intent was above, and if that's what we want, that's fine, but I just, I can't, I mean, you're actually charging a senior couple more than what you charged them for the couple each, to get the extended hours.
I mean, I'll, I'll be honest with you, as I'm talking this through here and thinking of this, why would we charge the whole amount? Would we need to charge both of a couple for the extended hours, the hundred?
I don't know, I just, I just want to make sure we know what we're doing.
No, I, I think.
If one of them has a card, the other one's gonna use the card.
Would, would the board be comfortable with just charging a hundred fifty dollars for the extended use for a couple, whether it's, and the senior couple, it'd be half that price? But it would be applicable for just a couple? Because, I mean, we're not looking to make, like, what we're trying to do is break even here with the different rate, and pay for the attendance that we're gonna keep on sale, so, my proposal would be that for the regular, non-discount couple, it would be a hundred, a hundred fifty dollars for the couple to get the extended. Now, here's what they would say, if you want separate key cards, part of the cost built in is, Jen, how much was it, ten, ten to fifteen dollars per key card?
I did, I don't even remember what it was.
So we were trying to cover the cost of the key card, so if they wanted two key cards, they would have to pay extra.
Right, and the extra utilities, the.
Because that was kind of built into it, is.
The facilities, have to do more cleanups and.
Well, here's what, I'm just gonna say this, I'm gonna throw this up to the board, we don't even have much to work. We're not looking to make, if we just do one fifty.
But then are you doing seventy-five for an individual?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so seventy-five for, because then a hundred and fifty for an individual.
No, no, I should clarify, what I was getting at is, it would be a couple discount, I, I would recommend we remain at one fifty for an individual extended membership, but if you are a couple, and you want to do an extended membership, you just pay one hundred fifty dollars.
You get one.
You both get the extended membership, you get one key card, if you want to pay fifteen dollars, you can get a second key card.
Your senior individual, your senior couple, would somehow be.
Would pay seventy-five dollars for the couple for the extended membership.
Yes, seventy-five, and for a college, and a college student, you just let them?
Uh, that would be my inclination, is we would just, they would have to, once we had covered the key card, cost of the key card.
They have to buy the key card, okay.
Yeah. I mean.
Okay. So, can you?
So we're gonna add.
There's gonna be a lot going on on this application, really.
You have here, we're gonna add.
It's gonna be confusing, I think, yeah, I have to figure out a way to streamline.
Yeah, it's, it's too generally, and I'm thinking about the front page article in this paper, I think I was holding it, I don't think I can put there.
All right.
Um, because, unless you can get me everything by H R or.
Well, honestly.
My suggestion would be that you have a little grid, and then, you know, there's, there's the individual couple, college, college, senior, senior couple, that's, and then there's the regular membership, and there's the extended membership, and it's just in a little chart, so that it isn't all over the place, and people can check which one.
We can do this, rather, like, I, honestly, I could do this, I could do this tomorrow morning.
And you know what I think I'll do, I'll keep in the article, but I'll say, all of the checks, because I don't care.
All of these you see listed are gonna be correct, we're just gonna make adjustments for the extended, appropriately, to what we just talked about, and we will do a grid, that does make sense, just do a little grid, so you know if you're a college student, here's what you would do.
And are we taking further word if they check college?
Well, if the tenant does not know, or if they just drop it in the comment box, they need to show.
College ID.
Yeah, college ID.
Yeah.
I'm still a little confused, an individual's one fifty.
Well, it'd be one fourteen for your regular membership, you'd pay an additional one fifty.
Okay, and a, a couple's two sixteen.
Plus one fifty.
Plus one fifty.
Plus one fifty for both of them for extended membership, so, so they're paying the couple rate, but they don't have to pay one fifty times two to get.
If I'm in a schedule, I'm gonna find a friend.
No, it has to be married couple. Because it's vows, it's vows.
Rick, you're a married couple.
Did you read the new regulations, bro? How can I get around that? What happens once, Julie?
What happens with just a family?
So often.
All students.
Getting free, something.
So long as they're over, whatever, let's say, fourteen, or whatever their age minimum is. Okay, so if someone lives in the district, but their kids don't go to the school.
They're still a resident of the district.
Yeah.
And they're.
For free.
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
So long as their parents visit them, if they're under eighteen, they still need the.
But yes, so they're a resident, they're a resident.
Great, or if they own a business in the community, even if they're not physical home residents, since there's a company.
Yeah. We didn't make that question. So we did make that exception.
He is from the grocery store, yeah.
Well, to clarify, we did make that exception, uh, in the top, if, if they're a business owner, so if it's on a home business, we do give them a resident membership if they want them.
Yeah, and that's at the top of, yeah, that's at the top of page two.
Yes.
Great, so it's 114 plus 150, 216 plus 150.
Yep.
College students, it's just what's here, plus the car costs.
Yep.
Senior individual is 57.
Plus.
Plus 75. Senior couple is 108 plus 75.
That's correct.
Got it.
That's right. So this will be easy to throw together tomorrow.
Okay, I'll make a motion with those adjustments.
I'll second. And we'll give the board a report once, uh, we end the, we'll see what the membership statement is. See if we can increase memberships, so. And how many transition number from attendant care shift full time, so.
But we do need to be careful that we are not saying that 24/7 is live.
Correct.
It's still kids, school focused, it's stuff.
Yeah, live. But during the summer, we would open it up once? Or are we only helping out those?
Well, but we have to see where summer school is.
Sure.
We have work around summer schedule, so that would sort of be a TBD.
Yeah.
Each summer.
Great, thank you for putting this deal.
Yeah.
So, so. The $20 thing, time limit, in fact, and until we begin these applications.
Well, as well, I mean, like, after you guys approve it tonight, we're going to post, like, as soon as people come in and fill out the paperwork, like, it starts. So.
You're going to post tomorrow?
This far.
Well, it's going to be updated.
As soon as we update these numbers, which is what we want on social media.
Yeah, they're available on website.
So according to the way the agenda is put out, we, um, it disappears to be an administrative function. There's not a call for board approval. Is that correct?
Okay.
That, that's what it appears to me.
Oh, then I take that.
Yeah, so then I would just be looking for, like, the changes, the more or less information can sent here for the board.
So the board approved it before we opened it with limited hours? So the board does not need to approve it with extended hours? I just want to clarify that, just because we did something impact.
Okay, okay.
I would say more or less.
Make sure.
Yeah.
Don't want to step out of bounds, so, okay.
Well, I, yeah, I think, yeah. And, you know, I remember at one point we had this discussion about what don't we have to?
Right, right.
Because I'm in front of Andy, you want to approve it, but we should change the date there. Do that, or we have to.
Here we are, change.
Right, I think you approve it just as covered.
I think you would.
Okay, let's prove it then.
Oh, I made a motion to approve it.
With the changes.
With the changes. So I have a motion, I have a, uh, it's been moved and seconded to approve the Panther Community Fitness Center documents with the discussed changes. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. F, PCCC enrollment update.
So Pam, do you want to jump in on this?
Are you putting something up?
No, I have, I have nothing.
Yeah, so I, I, what I can give you is we, we have a, one part-time new enrollment sent the open house.
Right, through the open house.
Through the open house. So part-time enrollment, so, um, not where we were hoping to be with the enrollments.
What, um, what is our enrollment? Did you ever get an answer?
Did you?
No.
So that was requested. It did, and then not submitted in time, but it was requested multiple times to get those numbers and not submitted.
Would you, would you mind taking and following up to just update us in an email with five, um, invent one, two, three, two, two.
Yes.
We're asking.
Yep.
Do we know if any of those who pulled their kids out, either the teachers or others who had summers free, who pulled their kids out, re-enrolled them again?
Y- yes.
I'm pretty sure two of the three families did.
They did. Two, two of the families did. And I, I will get verification once again. We didn't get any documents back as requested. That, I, I believe the third one did as well, so, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yes, some of them did, did that, uh, one of them sent them during the summer. The others, I thought, re-enrolled once school started, like, once the teachers were back. So I can get, once we get the documents, I will certainly share that.
Thank you.
Okay. I didn't see the early literacy remediation plan. There are just a few items that were updated. Things were highlighted or crossed off that needed to be switched. So the, um, the first, the Spanish version of this is linked to that. So that is on there. And then, um, if you scroll down a little ways, to the student support section three with those highlighted, those were just updated interventions that we have now purchased in order to help with, um, any of our students who need a little extra support with the reading for that, is why those were added to what we have previously.
My question is, the word, the words plan in Spanish linked here, shouldn't that be written in Spanish? I mean, if it reads that, I mean, I know it sounds so minor.
Yeah.
You're right. Iris is a really good boy.
Can we make that change, lovely?
Sure, definitely make that change. Well, we will get that translated and then we'll add that in.
Yeah, good catch.
Yeah.
With that modification, I'll make a motion to approve the early literacy remediation plan.
I'll second.
It is been moved and seconded to approve the early literacy remediation plan with the suggested change. Um, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. H, the turf tank, return.
I, uh, so Dan is here tonight to talk. I will let the board know, um, that Dan can cover this as well. They removed the, uh, two year in that complete clause at the request. Dan requested they removed it and Dan will talk a little bit about the bid from the other company that does this. So Dan, you want to cover your involvement?
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Yeah, if you look at this, if you look at the tiny mobile robots, that was the other bid. That was one of the other requests the board asked, was to have at least one more bid. That's all I'm fine. I did both worldwide. And Jason made the comment, he goes, are those the only two in our area? I said, no, those are the only two in the world.
Yeah.
I think you may be able to find some generic knockoff type of thing, but it's nothing that I would ever stand behind or put my name on, so. Um, if you look at the contract, the difference for basically the same type of robot, same type of thing, just a different company. You're looking at $10,000 a year is what they were quoting for the other one. So, and turf tank, gave me no problems about taking that out. I talked to him about it and he said, well, I said, it's a deal breaker. Is it a agreement or am I bored, he's going to walk away? And he said, no problem. He said, he thinks that the product will speak for itself, so he's not worried about it.
Just when I like here.
And they're actually working on other platforms going forward. So this is not a company that's going to be gone next year. They've been around for, I think, 20 years at this point already. It's just been slow boat with everybody getting on board and this kind of stuff.
Well, and Dan shared something really exciting with me the day after the other board meeting is that, what, spring of '26, they're, you know, with the lawn mower?
They didn't say spring. They said in 2026, they're working on a platform that'll.
Lawn mower module.
Lawn mowers. Have you ever seen the little Husqvarna ones? Husqvarna is the only other one in the industry that has something commercial side that you can use. But, uh, they're working on their version of it. And I think they're way ahead on the technology when it comes to that.
So they both kind of will be out next year.
And if you've ever gone to, what is it, I think it's Bold Eye Golf Course over in Rapids, he actually has the little Husqvarna and it's out there running around cutting grass and stuff.
Dan, can you talk about the?
That's the possibility of the future.
The rotation, the other thing the board asked me, and I just wasn't clear enough to answer it, about the rotation and how the parking lots are striped. And I was under the assumption it was all one. Can you talk about that for a moment?
No, honestly, it's always been that we wanted to do as much as we could every year, but we can't do that with, with budget constraints. So we've always kind of picked and choose. So in the past, we had alternated this parking lot, this parking lot, this parking lot, instead of doing them all at once. Well, you can see as they start to fade, it's been a while since we've done anything because just the budget's not there.
That's true. We held off because of that.
Correct, yeah. We did a few things on our own. We did some of the lines of bussing and stuff on our own. We do that with just the paintbrush and a roller, so we go old school on that. But that stuff we're looking to add in this and do it every year. So it really looks a little more pristine. And you can see where our, some of our handicap spots are right and how that stuff, we're able to do that. Oops, sorry.
Thank you for your.
No, I'm going to sit down here. I just want my question.
Well, um, could, do you see this being utilized by other examples? We see that, like, the baseball and softball fields could be used by this.
Correct.
And we currently maybe have coaches or volunteers that are also helping from a manpower standpoint. I mean, could you, or, or is it simply you take it down there and you can just go have lunch? Because it's still all by itself.
No, you still need somebody around that area. But what our plan is to do is to allocate it to a company else. You know, if a guy is down there and he's been hanging that at the time, he'll be doing weed training or bringing a lawnmower down there and do some lawn cutting work working over here. So it's actually we're doing some things at once. So it's freeing enough, freeing enough time for us to do other things.
This shows there's extra costs for each sport. But if you would ask, like.
Yes.
Justin, you want this for baseball? And he says, no, these guys want it. They don't want to, if they want to do it, to me not.
Again, there are two mindsets, you know, they have, they say they don't, the paint is not the greatest on the, on the infield.
Right.
But they also want the outfield paint. Well, with this, I can only do the outfield. I can do, um, there's a logo, we're going to cut some logo out of this field where we can put our pants around everything. Um, I was talking to Jason. I actually thought about some things for homecoming that I might try with putting seniors' number out somewhere. I don't know where yet, but you can do all that that's included in there.
Softball and baseball, they just to clarify, or they treat that as one.
Yeah, consider one sport if you look at it.
We only favor paying for two, you get two sports.
I just want to, with us paying for something and then the people that are in charge of it.
Yeah.
They're the ones doing it.
Yeah.
They're going to.
Well, the fact is, those guys are eventually not going to, you know, they may not be the ones doing it. So.
Right.
If we're the ones that have the time constraint, we're trying to get that to unplug the softball field done or anything else done at the time, this, this is a nice way to do it. It frees us up to get that and something else done at the same time.
Well, I think like, uh, you know, football field is on grass, yeah, that's, that's quite obvious.
Yeah, right.
Workout great for that. It's like a baseball or softball field, you know, that, that, that sand's going to get raked before and after every game. You know, they, they go around and drag it, um, and wet it, whatever the case may be. And they, they're using line, you know, instead of paint.
Paint.
But the outfield field, the outfield. It would just be, you know, left field line and the right field line.
Indiana don't, out of play lines.
And I'd ask the guys doing it, you know, Justin likes paint. The, the older guy is like John, it's just a, like, it's personal preference, I guess.
But you may, you want chalk in the outfield, do you?
Um, no, well, how do they do that, right? I think they stop right at the, and then they switch over to the paintboard and out.
Um, I would entertain a motion to approve the contract with turf tank.
I motion that we approve the contract of turf tank, isn't it, for three years?
Three years.
For three years.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It's been consented to for the contract of turf tank. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I just wanted to.
Down the road, I look forward to everybody coming to see it down.
I just wanted to comment that, you know, when this was presented and thank you for giving me additional information and going back, I'm just very thankful that you are looking for other alternatives to get work done than just people power because that will all, and so we really appreciate that and we totally support it and thank you.
Well, I think it's like everybody else, we're just trying to be creative with what we have.
Yeah.
The people just aren't there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good deal. Okay, item number 11, I was just worried about this. There is another legislative record coming up. It is going to be on Friday, uh, September 26th in Marshfield.
Is it at the?
It's going to be, I'm pretty sure, I'm almost positive it's at the Legion. I will not be there. I, um, I am out of town that day.
Can you tell me that day?
It is Friday the 26th and I can send you a flyer.
Please do.
Yeah.
Right, I can remember ten days.
Okay.
Danny could speak too, going on last year.
Yeah.
Well, well worth it.
In Marshville?
Yeah.
Yep. Um, it'll start like around seven. Yeah, I didn't bring the info with me at the time. Um, but I will pass that to you.
Please do. I'll, I'll share that with the board then. I would strongly encourage if you have time to stop up for it, it's well worth it. Because we, many of our local legislators have asked questions.
And, uh, there, we do have confirmation from one or two of the federal offices. Yeah, Tiffany's staff will be there and Baldwin's staff will be there.